I'd like to call to order the February 22, 2011, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. Yeah, we have roll call for the council, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
I'll call to order the Glendale Housing Authority.
Authority members Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Karasian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Sheriff Quintero.
Here.
Can we have your report, please?
Agenda for the February 22, 2011, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, February 17, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The first item?
Acting Director of Community Services and Parks regarding required financial statement for all nonprofit organizations receiving CDBG funds and new proposed financial pre-qualified guidelines. At one A's Council motion approving financial statement compilation reports as a type of financial statement required in addition to financial statement audit reports for those receiving $25,000 or more and financial prequalification guidelines for nonprofit organizations.
Mr. Starber?
Yes, I'll go to Jess Duran, Acting Director for the staff report. Jess?
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, Chairman Quintero, members of the Housing Authority. We are recommending that the City Council approve, one, financial statement compilation reports as a type of financial statement required to be submitted by all nonprofit organizations receiving CDBG funds, and two, financial prequalification guidelines for nonprofit organizations in order for them to be eligible to even apply for CDBG funds. And this, these recommendations are a follow-up to a report that was made to the City Council and Housing Authority on February 1, 2011, regarding recommendations for revisions to standards, guidelines, and policies for vetting CDBG funding proposals and evaluating financial qualifications of nonprofit organizations. One of the recommendations that was considered back on February 1, but not approved during the meeting was to require that all nonprofit organizations that receive CDBG funds be required to obtain a financial statement audit in addition to a financial statement compilation. The current policy is a two-tiered policy whereby organizations that receive more than $25,000 in City of Glendale CDBG funds are required to obtain financial statement audit reports, and those that receive less than $25,000 are not required to obtain financial statement audit reports. But irregardless of the amount of funding they receive from the City of Glendale, they are always required to obtain financial statement compilation reports, which we'll explain a little bit later in this presentation. As part of the discussion on February 1, the City Council also requested more information regarding the different levels of financial reports and also potential financial prequalification guidelines and criteria for nonprofits to be eligible for CDBG funding. So we're going to present those to you today, our recommendations. Community Services and Parks, internal audit, and finance staff met, and we have defined the three most common industry standard levels of organizational financial reports, and recommends that the City Council approve a financial statement compilation report as the report that we will require of all nonprofit organizations and which is the current requirement for nonprofits. And we've attached to your report a sample of what a financial compilation statement looks like. So the three basic industry standard levels of organization financial reports are, one, a financial statement audit report; two is what's referred to as a financial statement review report; and the third is a financial statement compilation report. Financial statement audit is the highest degree of assurance for evaluating financial statements. An independent CPA uses various techniques to verify the accuracy of financial information compiled by an organization. So that's the highest level of assurance of an organization's financial status. The second level would be the financial statement review, which is a financial statement reviewed by an outside CPA, but not the same CPA that prepares the actual financial statement report. And then the lowest level, which is the level which we currently require, is what's referred to as a financial statement compilation, which are typically, or are prepared by a CPA firm, and they prepare the financial statements of the organization, although the information is not tested by any outside or independent CPA other than the one preparing the report. And then those audits, those financial statement compilations are approved by the board and signed by the chief financial officer and filed as the financial report for that organization. So staff is recommending that the Council approve the financial statement compilation, the lowest level, as the minimum level and type of financial statement required to be submitted by nonprofit organizations receiving CDBG funds and applying for CDBG funds. And again, any organization receiving more than $25,000 will be submitting this level of financial statement in addition to a financial statement audit, a full-blown audit. And most organizations, probably 90%, do obtain financial statement audits and do submit those audits as part of their funding proposals. But again, the smaller organizations typically do not. I also indicated in the report that as it relates to HUD requirements, HUD does not specify which level of financial reports we're supposed to be obtaining from the nonprofit organizations, only that we obtain some level defined by the local jurisdiction and that we do monitor their financial systems at the end of the year. And the state also doesn't require any particular type of financial statement reporting by nonprofit organizations until they reach a, until they reach an organizational budget of $2 million, then state requirements kick in. In terms of proposed new prequalification standards and criteria, currently, the only prequalifications for nonprofit organizations, which we talked about last time, are, one, that they document that they are, in fact, an incorporated 501(c)(3) organization, that they do maintain a year-end financial statement, and that they produce a certificate of liability insurance. Right now, these are the only prequalification guidelines. And as I mentioned last time, the spirit and intent of CDBG from the federal level is that our program and the ability to apply for and receive CDBG funding is supposed to be an open competitive process. So we've had very limited prequalifications. But we've taken the Council's direction, we've thought about it, and have recommendations for new prequalification guidelines. And those are as follows: that organizations be required to submit two full years of financial statement compilation reports for the year ending no later than December. So we receive funding proposals every December, so the most recent financial report has to be for the year ending June 30 of the same year. We would like to require that nonprofit organizations submit copies of minutes of board meetings that include documentation of submission and review of financial statement reports by the board, which, again, we currently don't do. We'd like to require organizations to submit a resume of their chief financial officer of the organization and/or board treasurer, and identify certified public accountant firm responsible for preparing their financial statement compilations. Then we would like to require that nonprofit organizations submit a copy of receipt of payment of the most recent quarter payroll taxes, to certify that they are current with their payroll taxes. So at this time, we recommend that the City Council consider approving those prequalification guidelines and also approve our continued requirement for the financial statement compilation as the type of financial report that we'll require from all nonprofit organizations to participate in the CDBG program. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Let me just make sure I understand that. Everyone that's getting any money needs to do a compilation report. If you're getting 25 or above, you need an audit?
Yes, an audit in addition to your compilation report.
For a compilation. Plus the prequalification items that you just discussed.
Correct.
Two questions. I might be remembering incorrectly, but I thought we had talked about a threshold the last time we discussed this, a lower threshold of something like if they were asking for $5,000 or $10,000 rather than $25,000. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
Mayor Najarian, Councilperson Friedman.
$25,000?
It's always been $25,000 threshold, well, since 2008. Prior to 2008, every organization was required to obtain a financial statement audit. 2008, the advisory committee thoroughly studied this question and with help from the internal auditor at the time, Mr. Bill Fox, and they recommended the two-tiered policy, which we submitted to the City Council in 2008, which the Council approved as the policy for audits.
I'm just curious. We're here discussing this because of what happened with New Horizons. What did they, what had they submitted prior to receiving their grants? Did we receive a full audit from them since they were over that $25,000 mark?
We did. New Horizons was required to obtain a financial audit irrespective of Glendale CDBG funding because it was a requirement of their other funding sources, including the state of California and the county of Los Angeles. So they were obtaining one every year anyway. Actually, I stand corrected. They were on a two-year financial audit cycle.
So if that didn't catch that they were in trouble and protect taxpayer money, why would initiating what looks to me to be the exact same requirement, why would that make any difference?
In the case of New Horizons, I'm not sure that it would. In the case of other programs and other organizations from this point in the future, it may make a difference.
Yeah, I thought that we were going to be hearing recommendations that would look at what happened with New Horizons instead of procedures to be sure that that wouldn't happen again. But now I'm hearing that if you came in for the same amount of money that New Horizons received, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, they could come in tomorrow, submit the same material they submitted before, and get money from us even after our new policy. So where's the change?
Councilmember Friedman, on February 1, we discussed a list of recommendations for revising our policies as it related to how we vet funding proposals and monitor organizations once they've been approved for funding. And we did make some recommendations in direct relation to our experience with New Horizons. For example, on February 1, one of the recommendations approved by City Council was that we would no longer make it eligible to receive pre-development funding unless, which involves matching funds, unless those matching funds are also deposited and ready to be used for the project, which was probably the biggest error that was made with the New Horizons project. In addition to some other recommendations that the Council approved, for example, quarterly stats reports for capital projects, which we currently don't require, we only require quarterly reports for social service programs, and a number of other recommendations that you approved in relationship to our experience with New Horizons. That was on February 1. So this is a follow-up to that.
Okay, I understand that. I just don't quite understand why an audit wouldn't catch that they were in financial trouble. And I just still don't see what we're putting in place in terms of our audit procedures that would help prevent that from happening, or at least minimize the risk of us investing money in an organization that's on less than firm financial footing. And that might be because I'm not a CPA, I'm not an auditor, maybe there's something I'm missing, but it seems to me that there's no difference in at least that part of the procedure.
I had Mr. Drayman first, unless you want to...
Well, I just, sure, let's do it.
Starber?
Oh, well, I was going to note, I think Michelle Flynn would be quick to tell you that audits are not infallible. They're based primarily on what the individuals or firms, in this case, agencies, will provide the auditors and some of the limited tests they'll do. But for example, one of the items that's included here for all agencies or any organization regardless of contribution would be, at the time they make an application, making sure they're up to date on their payroll taxes. I understand that was one of the areas where New Horizons began to get into trouble. That doesn't mean that they were headed toward the end, but that is one of the signals that something's going wrong somewhere and would alert you very early on that an organization is having difficulty if their payroll taxes are not paid up. In my experience, that has been one of the terminal events for many nonprofit organizations is when they get so far behind, they're not being able to keep up with their payroll taxes. I think all you can do is build in enough checks and balances, reasonable ones, so that people can apply. But in the end, you can't eliminate all risk. The pre-development grants, they automatically carried with them some level of risk because they're pre-development grants by their very nature. They were there to allow groups to get started, to develop maybe some other planning effort in anticipation they'd be able to complete a project. In this case, a group got caught at the downturn, they were overextended. I'm not sure an audit of the last previous fiscal year would have necessarily shown that. Now, it may very well have been, had we asked for a submittal of up-to-date payroll, that might have been a stronger indicator that New Horizons was heading for trouble than frankly their most recent audit report.
Drayman, if you don't mind me just finishing my line of...
Right ahead.
So let's say that we receive back, that they're not able to provide that proof of the payroll taxes. What happens then? Are they automatically disqualified, or do they get to go in front of CDBG or the City Council and say, "Hey, we're good guys, you know us, you know, just, you know, it's someone, Harry forgot to deposit the check, you know, just go ahead and give it to us anyway"? Because I'd be a lot more comfortable with the former, where you fail on any of these, at least for this cycle, you're disqualified. You get your act together and come back in the next cycle, and then, you know, you could be reconsidered.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Friedman, it would be the latter. As a prequalification guideline, if when they submit their funding proposal and it's not complete and it's missing this documentation, then they don't go any further.
You mean the former, then?
The former.
The former, I'm sorry, the former. Yeah, they don't go any further. And as you pointed out last time, and we don't waste our time and energy entertaining, you know, thoughts of them receiving CDBG funds until they come back and demonstrate that they're qualified to participate in our program.
Can I add to that, though? It's actually your policy. I mean, if you'd like it to be hard and fast in that manner, it certainly can be. I think that would be your staff's recommendation. If someone is at a point that they're having that kind of difficulty, they should get their act in order. But in the end, if they appeal to you, it's going to be up to the City Council to make a decision on what it is you want to do. If you'd like this to be hard and fast, you don't even get in the door, staff's more than comfortable with that.
Yes. And Councilmember Friedman, I can give you another example. One of our recommendations on February 1 was, we will have nonprofit organizations submitting proposals for capital improvement projects, and they meet all of the requirements. And to date, they've done a good job, and they've demonstrated they have capacity, but they won't own the property that they want to have rehab. And one of our securities, of course, is being able to place a lien on the property. And so what we'd like to do is be able to bring those projects to the City Council, and you determine if you want to take that calculated risk. With everything else being equal and them doing a good job to date with regard to anything else, and then you decide if you want to take that calculated risk. If it's, you know, the needs in the community that they're meeting, if it's worth taking that risk, then you can decide.
I just wanted to clarify something. And somehow, I think, I'm not sure it answers the question, but I think, lest I'm missing something here, we are, with this conversation, missing the point of the last time we met and why this issue came back. We voted unanimously, if I recall, to pass all of the other sort of checks and balances that were recommended. That was the part that was related to, that was driven by, in this case, the concerns over what occurred with, among other things, what occurred with New Horizons. The reason we asked for this to come back was the question of whether nonprofits that were requesting smaller awards or were smaller organizations should be required to have a full audit because the costs, we were hearing from various people who were here speaking, that ranged from $3,000 to $5,000 to even $8,000, which seemed, in the way it was presented, not to make a lot of sense if they're requesting, say, a $5,000 award, that they would then have to have a $5,000 audit in order to qualify for a $5,000 award. I think that was the clarification, and that was the reason this issue was returned to us. It wasn't specifically driven, I don't think, by the issue of New Horizon, although I think the overall topic was driven, to take a closer look, because of what happened with New Horizons. So having said that, for me, the clarification, Jess, that you have made here answers that for me. It is a, you've explained the difference, particularly for, and I join Councilmember Friedman in the category of certainly not being a CPA. So this really did help clarify the different levels of review, you know, financial statement review, financial statement compilation, et cetera, a financial statement audit. So that answers part of the question. My question would still be, however, the financial statement compilation, or that's the term of art, but that's the term that's here, for an organization out in the community, what is that likely to cost them?
What is that likely to cost them? Is it okay with you, could we ask the city internal auditor, Michelle?
I know, I want you, if I have to talk about, if I have to talk about things related to just being a CPA, then I'm just Kees and Jeff. Sure, anybody that you feel that could appropriately answer the question.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. Rough estimate, it could be anywhere from maybe 1,500 to 3,000 to 5,000, depending on the size of the organization. But as we look through some of the applications that Jess's staff had, the majority are receiving financial statement reviews at this point or audits. And so the compilation is even a step down from a review.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question on that particular subject. Is it a conflict of interest for a CPA firm to do an audit for any one of those financial reviews pro bono?
Oh, no. Yeah, I think so. Unless they sign a conflict of interest form, I don't know if Scott has something on that.
You know what I'm saying, Scott? I mean, if...
I do, and I'm not sure. I think there's some provisions under the most recently enacted federal laws that prohibit an accounting firm from having one client, doing all the auditing work for one client. But I'm not sure about pro bono work. I've not seen anything that would do that, but I've not seen anything the other way either. We'd have to look at it. Sure that...
I'm not sure either.
I mean, presumably, some of these groups may go to a CPA firm and say, "Look, we're a nonprofit, can you do, give us an audit for free"? And maybe we would start to lose some of that arms-length objectivity if they're obviously somehow vested in...
Although, if I can, Mr. Mayor, you're going to have the same level of concern on the part of the CPA firm because they're going to put their ticket, their registration, and their E&amp;O policy on the line if indeed something is wrong and they're expressing an opinion. So I would think a CPA firm might very well do pro bono work, but I think they're going to be, in that case, just as concerned about the level of review as they might if they were being paid.
Yes, that's true. And they have to be independent. They have to maintain their independence and objectivity, so that's crucial.
So for example, if a member of the Board of Directors is also a CPA, that firm couldn't be doing the review.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
Would have to be an independent firm. Otherwise, you would have a conflict of interest.
That would be a problem.
I interrupted you, sir.
No, I just, I just had an opportunity to answer my, ask my question, it was answered. And I just want to thank the staff for the clarification. So I am comfortable with the question here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have another question. Well, first, I appreciate Mr. Drayman's focusing this on what we're talking about today, and he's absolutely right. We did adopt the procedures for groups that are asking for more than $25,000 a year. But for me, it's important for me personally to understand the difference between the audit and the financial statements, which is why I'm asking questions about those. So for these financial statement compilations, do they have to be done by a CPA? What if you have a small organization that does them themselves, someone volunteers in the group who is a retired CPA, or maybe really has no background, but just, they're the one that didn't show up to a meeting, so they got elected treasurer, and so they're the ones that do the books? Is that acceptable to us, or does it have to be from a CPA?
Well, the way it's written currently is an independent CPA, so that would be someone outside of the organization that would do it for you. And they would provide a report as well as the financial statements in an organized fashion in order for everyone to be able to review them.
So the financial statement compilation has to be compiled by a CPA?
Correct.
Sheriff Quintero?
And for myself, I would like to keep it at the CPA level, not to have a friend of a friend who does income tax on the side. I think we need to have, the CPA obviously is not only taking the training, but is actually certified by the Board of Accountancy, et cetera, et cetera, undoubtedly has E&amp;O insurance, stays at CPA.
And something to lose because he or she is certified.
Actually, years ago in California, there was a designation, "Public Accountant". Does that still exist? Are there still...
CPA Certified Public Accountant.
No, no, but just...
Just a PA.
PA.
Years ago, years ago.
Yeah, there must be someone in their 70s or 80s that's still a public accountant.
This is before Michelle was born.
Thanks.
I think there used to be a designation of a PA which was a public accountant but not certified.
That's right.
Thank you. I have a card from the public, and we'll take this next. Rubik Ovanesian?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the Council, city manager, city attorney, and the public. My name is Rubik Ovanesian, Cranbrook Realty Corporation. I'm speaking today on this matter because I served as a CDBG commissioner years ago, and during my tenure, we actually introduced conflict of interest rules, and then the city attorney worked on it, and we actually, they got started getting enforced. But during my three years on the CDBG commission, I wanted to tell you that the staff would do a wonderful job and would be very detail-oriented and work with, working with organizations and thoroughly check everything. Part of the problem that we're encountering is due to the economy. And when you have 40% property value reductions, and a lot of the nonprofits, they have a working relationship with the city, school districts, county, and the state, when the fundings are cut down to 50%, and the organizations lose a lot of contracts, they're literally in a very bad shape. Second part of their funding comes from the organizations or other public and the large corporations giving them donations. In a lot of the case of the organizations that work in the community, and I've had the pleasure of working with them as a commissioner or as a contributor activities, have participated in, a lot of them right now are in a really financially tough situation, given the economic real estate values and so on and so forth. As a real estate practitioner, we're actually advising several other nonprofits in the community on how to deal with some of their financial difficulties, such as the New Horizons and several other ones. But I want to tell you that the staff during my term did a wonderful job. But eventually, the issue came when the commissioners and the staff concluded their work and made their recommendations. It was the Council had to switch those dollars and wants and make the final decision. So eventually, it's the Council that gives the dollars, and sometimes it's maybe the Council members need to look into the organizations and figure out, is this the best way to spend the dollars that come to the city? Thank you.
You. I have no other cards, or any other... Drayman?
Well, just to be clear, Mr. Duran, if you could, everything that we passed prior relates to all of those safeguards or checks and balances or whatever you want to call them. They do relate to all potential organizations that apply, not just $25,000 and over.
Correct.
For everyone. It was just, it's just this specific issue of the level of the financial review that we're talking about here.
Correct. And new prequalification guidelines.
Drayman?
It's not a question you'd ask for comments, so I'm willing to go along with the financial statement compilation for the groups that are asking for $25,000 and under, as long as it is being done by a licensed CPA, not just by a member of the Board of Directors, et cetera. I also would favor a hard and fast disqualification rule. Really don't want to see these groups who don't qualify having an opportunity to come to Council or CDBG and be able to lobby and pressure and all of that. And, you know, all of these groups that apply for CDBG funds, every single one of them is worthy, whether they're in strong financial footing... is worthy, whether they're in strong financial footing, or as Mr. Ovanesian said, they're having trouble because of the economy. They're all good groups, and they all are doing good things for the community. The tendency is always to want to help them, but we really have a responsibility at this point to protect the taxpayer and taxpayers' money, and there's more than enough groups who want the funding. And I do believe that the ones that are on the firmest financial ground are the ones that are in the best position to help the people that they're offering services to, and they're the ones that should get this limited amount of grant money that we have available. So if there's a way that we can build that into the procedures so that it's not, so that the ability to appeal or to ask for special favors is built out of the process or that can't happen, I would strongly recommend that. But otherwise, I'm happy that staff was able to come up with a compromised position to help the smaller groups, and I do think that that will benefit, you know, some of our smaller nonprofits and more, and nonprofits that are starting out.
Any due process problems with that, Mr. Duran?
If these are strictly ministerial, which my review of the four, if they're ministerial, no.
Say someone says, wait a minute, you know, Joe really did forget to put the money in...
That's not the issue. If you don't have the two full years financial statement compilations, if you just don't have them, essentially, it's ministerial. You either do or you don't, like a building permit. An appeal to denial of a building permit, building permit's ministerial.
Well, let's say it's a one-year startup CDBG, I mean, organization. Are we then excluding any new starts? They have to have at least two years under their bill.
Would with this. And I don't see a due process problem, this is pretty ministerial.
There's a motion, if there's...
Make a motion, one...
Second.
Call, please. Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
So am I voting for...
Your own recommendation.
My own recommendations? Okay, I want to be sure. Yes.
Antara?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Nagerian? Yes. Well, let's clarify that. Was that Friedman's remarks as an amendment to this motion, so we need to vote on the amendment first?
I understand, by adopting this motion, as Mr. Starber noted, this is your policy. While you can express a desire that there are no appeals, there's no lobbying, the reality is somebody can come before you at a council meeting or a housing authority meeting and make a plea at oral communications for you to reconsider your policy in the council and just say, we're not going to agendize it, it's over.
You can't stop them from doing that anyway.
You can't stop them from doing that, that's... But for example, that would come very early to you because the staff would, for example, kick out an application on its way to the CDBG committee. So prior to the CDBG committee picking up the applications, people would know that they didn't qualify, they didn't make the cut.
Right at the front end of the process.
But then despite our set policy, council or the housing authority or both would certainly be able to change their policy.
That's correct.
Just like just about any...
Housing authority, the CDBG committee couldn't change your policy, but it would have to come to you.
Would have to come to you.
So the CDBG committee would be bound by your policies, as would staff. You're the only ones who would change it.
That doesn't, is that what you were, I mean, you wanted a sort of a hard and fast rule where we don't get lobbied for changing the policy?
Well, what I'm looking for is something whereby they don't get into that queue of applications, even with what now would be sort of an incomplete and unacceptable application. So they don't have the chance to go in that list of projects that are brought in front of CDBG for consideration. Like you said, there's never anything that can stop someone from getting up. As we've had people who have had bids rejected for public projects, where they were thrown out on their face and never went forward because they were incomplete, they've gotten up in front of us at council and said, hey, you know, we forgot to add those lines together, but we've changed it, and, you know, please take a look. And I think council, you know, always has the option of, like you said, changing the policy, but if it is, it sounds to me like it would be a question of actually going back and changing the policy, and rather than just...
Correct.
Asking CDBG to reconsider, you know, one of their recommendations.
That's correct.
It would be a more difficult process.
Ms. Mayor, if I can, somebody would have to approach the housing authority or city council. You would need to then agendize the item and essentially change your policy and give different direction to your staff and to the CDBG committee on the matter. So nothing prevents anybody from ever talking to you or coming to a council meeting or housing authority meeting expressing their views, but you'd have to agendize it, you'd have to take a formal action to change the policy.
It would not be unlike what occurred in 2008 or '09, I think in 2009. Anyway, an organization, a nonprofit, came before the council on an agendized item, asked that we change our policy related to rental, on the rental costs on the civic auditorium, and asked that we change our policy on that. And I think the conclusion was that, oh, it was a wonderfully worthy organization, that to do that, we'd be changing the policy. We couldn't just instruct staff, this one organization gets to do X, Y, and Z, even though the policy is something else. And even the spokesperson for the organization that was here said, well, actually, yeah, if you extend that to us, you'd have to extend it to every group. And we voted to leave the policy alone, as beneficial an organization as they were. I think it's pretty much like that. Organizations can still come forward and ask, and if they could get the council to agendize it, then it would be an agendized item to discuss it. But the question, as you pointed out, would be, the question was, do we change the policy?
Just one question. Is this a council policy or a housing policy?
Council policy.
So did we make that clear? Was our... Yes? Record keeper's there.
Make a motion, do adjourn?
No, it's only a...
No, it's just a council motion.
Do I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you may. That concludes our business.
If there's a second?
Second.
We need a motion for the housing authority?
Show me.
Second. We are adjourned.